Okay. We call the meeting to order after a brief recess. For those of you who weren't in the selectmen's room, we just spent about ninety minutes going over the school building project and additional money that will be required. And the school committee and selectmen voted unanimously to support the project moving forward. So that was a very important vote. And next, we will move to our regular agenda. First item is public input. If there's anybody who wishes to be heard on any items that aren't on the agenda, please make it known. Okay, seeing no one, next we'll move to Kristin Shavelin with our student report as she heads to the home stretch of her North Reading High School career. Kristin?
Okay, so last week sixteen students went to Hyannis for a student council conference and all across the state kids came and there was around, there was over a thousand kids there. And all the awards that we had submitted, we actually won, which was really impressive. Jackie Lanzaro, she's a sophomore, she won the James Roca Award. She's also a delegate on our regional level. Maddie Capazudo, she was our unsung hero and she was the unsung hero of the region. We submitted something called the Book of Excellence and we won bronze Council of Excellence for that, which is pretty impressive for it being our first year submitting it. We also were awarded a top ten award for our can drive that we do every year. And three students, Maddie Capazudo, Rachel Gudrow, and Josh and Torseo got the Commonwealth Awards for our council. Last Friday, we had a snow day due to the snow. This week, we have a half day on Thursday and it's a teacher development day. Last Wednesday, the boys varsity basketball team had a game and they played against Wayland and they unfortunately lost. It was sixty-four to forty-eight, but they played a really great game and they had an undefeated season, so it's something to be proud of. On March twenty-seventh, we are having an assembly on the dangers of drinking and driving. And last week, there was a college parent night at the high school for juniors and all the feedback was really positive for that. The sophomores have an assembly tomorrow about MCAS and next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, they have their English MCAS. And also next Wednesday, there is parent conferences at six-thirty. And also on March nineteenth, there's something called Alumni Night and six former graduates will be coming to the high school and speaking to the students about how North Reading High School prepares you for life after school and in college. And also on Monday of next week, the eighteenth spring sports begin. And for my, my student work today, my AP Civics and Government class, we did a mock Senate committee hearing. And basically, we got to role-play like Senate and different witnesses like the Sierra Club or the EPA. And it was on a proposed bill, the American Clean Energy Act, which was actually proposed in two thousand nine and it's just talking about a cap and trade act on greenhouse gases. So I was Senator John Boozman from Arkansas and I was a Republican and I had to talk and present my views on it. And this was actually a really interesting project. I don't do a lot of these, a lot of these in this class especially. And we got, so I learned like a lot about this, but it also worked on public speaking and I had to go up in front of my class and the boys were in suit and ties and the girls were wearing dresses and it was just really nice and we, it was just like how the Senate works and stuff like that, so.
Well, if you're talking to each other, it's really not how the Senate works.
Well, yeah.
Not to spoil your dreams.
Did you mind being a Republican or, did you mind being a Republican?
Oh, stop it.
There's nothing wrong with being a Republican.
Nothing wrong with being a Republican, exactly, exactly.
Bless her.
Right.
We'll pray for him.
Any questions?
They're all Republicans at heart.
I know, I know that Kristin loves the snow days because seniors don't have to make up the snow days.
Yes.
They especially love those snow days.
No more.
It was a surprise to all of us. I think when most of us went to Bent Thursday, it was barely snowing and then we were supposed to have a meeting Friday morning and I got up and had the email saying, there's no meeting and I looked out the window and you couldn't see, so we had to call some of them off. Any questions for Kristin? How many more times have you been here? Not many, right?
I think maybe one more time.
Well, congratulations on the student council awards too, that's great.
That's outstanding.
And most of the people you mentioned are also the representatives to the school committee, so we get to see most of those folks before the end of the year. Congratulations. Thanks, Kristin.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're gonna move to, we have a presentation regarding the Teams Grant and we have our school physician and we have our school nurses and I don't know if they all want to come up to the table and talk about that or is this Laurie's gonna come up and talk about the grant?
Yeah, they wanted me to.
Okay, but maybe, maybe you can introduce the nurses.
Oh, that would be good.
She looks familiar.
Yeah.
I know.
You have something to do with the school building project or something?
I've heard you have built in a new school. So thank you. My name's Laurie Witz and I'm the school physician for the North Reading Public Schools. I was trying to remember how long I have been, I'm not really sure, but I think it's around five years. I actually thought my schedule was gonna lighten up and my volunteer work was gonna slow down, so I approached Kathy about a year ago and I said, hey, I really wanna start doing something. I've just been signing orders and getting a few phone calls, but, and then the Teams project came up and I'm busier than ever, but it's all good. So thank you for letting me come tonight. Specifically, this was to tell you about the Teams project and maybe I can grab that and just...
I can do it the other way, right? Could you maybe show that up?
Yeah, just something. I don't know what I'm doing. But...
It's gonna reach.
I have, I have a remote remote, I didn't bring it. It's in the projector case on the top. In the front pocket.
Maybe I have to focus. Maybe I just need to slide it over a little bit.
Yeah, it's definitely on your...
Oh, it's on the, okay. Well, I'll tell you what they say. Sorry about that. It looks good on this, yes, or at least it did.
Yeah, it's the same.
All right, I think it's okay. There's pulling on, it may be too important on the right side. I'll let you know. So in my other life, I am a family physician full-time in Swansworth, Mass. And so I take care of families, not just kids. And I think that gives me a pretty unique perspective on taking care of these kids. My patient population is very, very similar to North Reading and I love what I do and I hope to use this project and go forward and work together with the nurses and with you all for as long as you'll have me. So this is the agenda, I won't read it, but this is a few things that I hope to get through pretty quickly because I know you have other business, but, oh, I'm gonna have to remember what that says. So school health. There's lots of definitions of school health. This is actually my favorite. I've seen at least five. But coming from Madison, I decided to take the line from the American Academy of Pediatrics. You know, thirty, forty years ago, if you asked them on what school health is, they probably would say it's the school nurse and that's it. There are obviously most of what school health is still today, but as you can see, we like to try and think of school health as much, much more than that and we like to see that it involves all of the things on the slide. And probably the most important thing is we like to make it coordinated, involving families in the medical home, which you may or may not be familiar with, a relatively new terminology. That really just includes anything as far as the primary medical care of the child or adult. So that would include their pediatrician, family physician, any specialist they have, mental health counselors, anybody who takes care of them outside. And again, I won't read all of those to you, but this is just a really nice picture that I stole from a presentation on my packets. Thank you, Kathy. Otherwise, I was gonna have to go find it myself. So there's a lot of components to a coordinated school health program and I think we do a pretty good job already and hope to continue to include everyone who has a little circle on that screen. So I do care about school health. Some of us care about it because it's our job, but hopefully, we all care about it for these reasons. Kids come to school and they're not all healthy. You know, we like to think that on the days that they're here, they're relatively healthy, but everyone might have a chronic health condition, may or may not be active. But kids are sicker these days than I remember them being when I was one of them. So that's probably the most important is we need to take care of them whether they're feeling well or not. And number two is probably the thing that I hope that if you remember one thing about tonight, it would be that, and that is that healthier students make better learners. Lots of different ways to say that, but you know, it's hard to do anything when you're sick and learning is a pretty good job. And third one, obviously, I deal with primarily and that is, you know, when kids are well, they come to see me once a year and if I'm lucky, I get to spend twenty minutes with them and that's if I'm lucky. If they have other problems, concerns, or those other things going on, to talk about health, wellness, preventive care gets shortened into five minutes. And so that's where the school, the entire team, the nurses, the teachers, you all help. So that's relatively obvious. And this one, I don't know what we're gonna have to work with. But I brought some of my colleagues with me, they're hiding out in the back, but you all should meet them. And I asked them if they'd introduce themselves. So we'll start over here.
Hi, I'm Karen Adams, I'm the high school nurse.
And I'm Penny Kulikowski, I'm at the middle school.
And I'm Sue Swansworth, I'm the board health nurse.
I'm Chris Mancini, I'm the nurse at the batch.
I'm Lois Spissin, the nurse at the hood.
And I'm Marielle Pacella, the nurse at the little school.
I just wanna say one thing. About two weeks ago, there was this story about Pennsyl County Regional High School and they had the norovirus outbreak there and they were like, it said there were like a hundred fifty kids. The first thing I thought was, of all our nurses in our schools, I was like, imagine if they had to go through that? A hundred fifty students? That, I mean, we, I think we underestimate the responsibilities that our nurses have in each of our schools. It's a huge, huge job.
There's a huge, huge slide coming up too.
Good. But it goes beyond, I scraped my knee and I, you know, and I have a sore throat, so...
Absolutely. And unfortunately, the slide, the slide cut off the bottom, but total year's experience in excess of fifty. I forget the exact number.
What was it, fifty something?
Fifty-four?
Fifty-four.
Okay, so these girls generally, they do. So what do they do? Here we go. We probably, I won't go through them all, or maybe I will, because they're really all important, but you know, primarily, we, we all think of the school nurse as someone who provides the first aid when so-and-so falls off the jungle gym. And that's really important and we're glad that they're there and they administer medications, but the second one is probably one that they do a lot of and I'm not really sure, even if, even as someone who has patients who are in a different school system, these nurses manage sick kids every day. And not just sick, like I have a fever and a sore throat, but I have this chronic condition and I need your help. And I'll go through some more of that in detail coming up. Obviously, life-threatening allergies, you know, that we live with every day, that can happen, could happen now. I'm glad they're here. And there's number four, right there, in the sedenials during epidemics, they help monitor, you know, keep track of how many kids we have with what. Was important a few years ago when the H1N1, they did some work with that. Respond to whatever concerns that patients, students might have that day. You know, we all like to think that everybody, every family can sort of figure out what they need to do with certain conditions, but some people need some help. Some people don't know where to turn and the school nurses and Sue Swansworth, our public health nurse, help families who have problems and, you know, maybe they don't have a physician or they don't like their physician or their physician's not available and they might have a question about a program, how can I get help with X, Y, and Z? And these nurses connect them. They connect them with providers, they connect them with insurance, they connect them with hospital programs. They know, they have a lot of knowledge about where to send these families. We, I think we all know they do screening. I don't think we realize how much time that involves, but it's a lot of stuff. And then education, they obviously help do that. They keep track of those immunizations and they send note the forms if someone's behind, very important, involved in developing health plans and obviously, emergency preparedness. All right, this is what I'm gonna have to remember what it says. You don't have to read this, but the Teams program, Penny from the middle school found out about it first, before I knew anything about it, applied with your permission and we were accepted. It's actually quite exciting. It's a program, it doesn't involve money, we don't get any money, but we get a lot of help in other ways. It is funded by the CDC, coordinated by the American Academy of Pediatrics and basically, Teams, you can see it stands for Training, Education Assistance, Mentorship, and Support. And the American Academy of Pediatrics, as you can imagine, has a lot of folks. They have a lot of folks who know a lot about kids and school health and whatnot. And we were invited to be in the first group of schools in the country, actually. So you can see that ten school districts so far, six from Massachusetts, four from Arkansas are involved in this program. It's a five-year program, we're now in year, starting year two. And hopefully, we'll learn a lot and they'll assist us and then the goal is that we then go on to teach the next generation, so to speak, and work as peers. We're all connected through the internet, they have a website for us, we can chat with folks from Worcester or Chelsea, welcome. We met them all. Sue, Penny, and I went to Chicago in November for a weekend on their dollar. And we met all these folks. We met some of the great people at the state level in Massachusetts and these other towns. We met the big wings in Arkansas and learned what they do and it's just, it's really exciting. So everybody gets to pick a project. You have a short-term project and you can go on because it's five years. So we've decided to try and keep it simple. Our project is really just to try and let everybody know that we're here and how maybe we can help and how we can work together. So our first goal is to just increase the visibility of the program, let people know who is in the school, what they can do, what they wanna do, what we need help to do, and that's why we're here. So the first part of our presentation was, first part of our project was to do this presentation and so there we are, we're officially started. So I asked the nurses to come up with a list of some of the health problems that students in this town deal with every day. And the only one that I actually have the exact number for is asthma, because that's, I imagine, one that's very easy to, not easy, but easier to keep track of.
That's an incredible number for asthma. I cannot believe that the asthma cases that we deal with these days.
It is. It's a lot, there's a lot of asthma. And there's a lot under the neurologic disorders as well. I had numbers from some of those schools, but I didn't wanna just guess. But you know, ADHD, it's up there. It's not as high as asthma, but it's up there. You know, we have, you know, the mental illness and I put parentheses, known because, as you know, there's a lot of stuff that people disclose and talk about and let you know what they're, what they're treating and then there's folks that have stuff and we have no idea. So it's not any different from any, any other town, but we've got, we've got some, we've got some stuff. And one of, one of my goals is, and the nurses as well, I know, is to try and maybe develop some, some better communication tools to use with families, parents, and, and doctors in the community so that we can communicate better and know, you know, who needs, what's going on, any, any major things that we don't know about that we should probably know. You know, kids get their physicals, but not every year. You know, we're required to, I'm required to fill out these forms for my patients, you know, a couple of times through their school career, but you know, stuff happens in between those physicals and I think it's really important that someone in the school, just maybe the school nurse, know which kids have these serious things. But any questions about those? Nothing, nothing I don't think I'm expected, but you know, the things that we're seeing more of, you know, the concussion things, obviously, those are...
What kind of, I know we do the education around that and that parents are supposed to read and go through the, and do the tests before the school year, before their kids can play sports, et cetera. But what kind of education are we doing on the post-concussion syndrome? Because I think that's a far bigger problem. You know, you're, you're gonna only prevent a tiny percentage of concussions because these kids are playing contact sports. But I think the post-concussion syndrome education is seriously lacking. You know, you'll have kids go home and they'll be on the computer and video games and they shouldn't be near those things. And so what do we do and are we thinking about how we can, how we can do that better?
I don't know what we do right now, to be honest with you. I don't know if anybody knows, but at least certainly something that...
I was just speaking with a student today who, as we were talking about spring sports, informed me that this student would be unable to participate in a sport that this student had participated in in the past due to post-concussion syndrome. So we talked a little bit about how this person knew about what to do and it was a combination of working with the athletic department at the high school as well as this person's physician. And the parents became very educated on post-concussion syndrome. So I think it's a collaborative effort to make sure that parents and students know what needs to happen once a person suffers from a concussion.
I ask because I'm familiar with, I know someone who has started a new project, it's called the Knockout Project, and this is someone who did motocross racing and he suffered some, you know, first he was in a car crash, but then he suffered some really serious concussions and he's probably in his early forties, late thirties. And he deals with it every day, to the point, some days, he feels suicidal because he can't remember his kids' names or the pain is so bad. And so he started this thing called the Knockout Project and it's, he's getting people from all over the country, well-known athletes, et cetera, to participate. And one of the things they wanna do is go around to school systems and educate kids to not fool around with this stuff and to present case studies of people around the table to say, this is what happened to me because I didn't treat my, I didn't treat my concussion in the right way.
It's very serious.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's someone that I think I'll put in touch with the superintendent because it's, it's a worthwhile project.
So this number, I actually was quite impressed with when I was given it. So this just gives you an idea of how many visits with the nurses the kids have had. And this is just to January. This doesn't include February, March. Yeah. It's a lot of work.
That's great.
Fatigue.
I suffer that every day. I don't have a nurse around to help me.
Okay, so that, that one is pretty... Yeah. I'd just like to say that it's not only students that the nurses administer to. I had an event this year and actually, I've had a couple and the nurses have been very accommodating.
I think you might be in this presentation.
And so it's not, we can't forget that there's a whole other realm of people in the schools, the adults, that the nurses also administer to.
Is this something we should be aware of before we renew your contract?
We'll talk later. Don't forget a physical. So let's see, this is pertaining to, this is pertaining to diabetics. You can see, the first one is for kids who were not where they needed to be with their sugars, so either too high or too low, ninety-one hours of care. And then down below, these are for kids who actually were where they needed to be, fifteen hundred hours in five months. So diabetes, I don't have to tell you, is a serious illness. Then you have Kathy, the bottom number, five hundred plus, visits related to care of staff.
It's true.
It's a lot, it's a lot. So this, six hundred and eighty-eight phone calls in five months. How to best care for these kids, the screenings, the treatments, and the meds. I think those numbers are pretty huge. And down the bottom, you can see they work with the teachers, they train them how to do vital signs and how to use everything else. Let's see, this is about education, that says the nurses have taught in a setting, over sixteen hundred students, about the following things, and they have plans to do more in the next, well, probably two months now, because this is a more slide now. All the things, you know, that are important, nutrition, safety, how to be summarized and we can certainly talk about whether we should put other things in there. These are some other things that the nurses in town, so this includes Sue, of course, have been, I'm not sure what it's supposed to say, instrumental in something, I never would have ended it in a preposition, so... So assisting, obviously, in flu clinics, that's huge, that's nearly. Optimizing the health for students, wide variety, that was the previous slide, both chronic and acute injuries and illnesses. And coordinating with community resources to help, I think that says, ensure families support their students and increase their success in school. Most importantly, they're our first line of defense, they're our go-to, they're, they're there whenever the kids are there. And I might point out that I think it's really great that we do have a nurse in every school. There certainly are places that don't and I am extremely grateful every day I send my kids to school that there's a nurse there. The return to class rate of ninety-seven percent, that's just sort of what it says, how many times do we actually, they do some sort of an assessment and deem that this child can go back to school instead of home or elsewhere. It's easier to learn when you stay in the school. And then the last one talks about 911 calls, figuring out who has a, who has an emergency, who is gonna die if you don't call 911. And bottom line says it all, they have saved some lives. So that is pretty much the presentation. Where do we go from here? You may all know, the Longlist Committee is up and running again and where it will go, I don't know, but I'm sure it will be something great and we will work alongside with them. And again, I alluded to earlier, we hope to get more information out there to the people who I think need it, parents, physicians in the community. We want to be coordinated, we wanna do a really good job and we think we need to share information better and just let people know we're here. They'll try and be technical and I'll try and do better job at my next presentation and invite me back so that you can actually see what I wrote. And I hope to be back.
Jerry always says you gotta use the overhead projector with the, what do you call those things?
Yeah, the overhead, no overhead, block.
The transparency.
Okay, I'll do that next time.
Jerry's really good with those, if you need any help. He writes right on it with the marker. That's good.
All right, Jerry.
One, one idea, and Kathy, I don't know if you've already discussed this, but you know how we pretty much have that weekly column in the transcript where a teacher or an educator, I could see at least two or three articles coming out of this that could go into the regular rotation of that, you know, of that space that we have every week. And the same thing with the patch, so...
I agree. I'm sure that a principal would be very happy to ask one of the school nurses to write the article for that week.
Right.
To go into the trend. This is a weekly article that's in the transcript and they're written by the administrators across the district, so it is an opportunity for us to share some important information around health and wellness in the school district.
Even that goes alone to give an indication of how much work the nurses do and it's not just, I need a Band-Aid on my knee. It goes much, it goes much beyond that.
Mrs. Bullard is the person that oversees our health and wellness program in the district, so I'm sure she'll probably give up her article space.
I think it's in May, the next one's in May.
The next one is in May and she may be asking one of the health professionals to provide an article during that one.
Any other questions for Laurie and Jerry?
Laurie, obviously, we have a nurse in every school and they're there from the status of the school day till the end of the school day?
Usually before.
Before.
Before, after.
Now, do you know, I mean, just of examples of school districts, whether that's a common thing to have a nurse, because I know some years back, we didn't. And I know the school committee pushed at that point to...
I think it's very common in Massachusetts.
To have one in every school.
I just know in other states it's not.
Okay, I'm just curious.
I think it's...
Yeah. I mean, and I think when you see that, it really emphasizes the need for it, it's incredible.
The next one is in May, and she may be asking one of the health professionals to provide an article during that one.
Any other questions, Flora, and Jerry?
Flora, obviously, we have a nurse in every school, and they're there from the start of the school day till the end of the school day?
Usually before.
Before.
Before, after.
Now, do you know, I mean, just of examples of school districts, whether that's a common thing to have a nurse, because I know some years back, we didn't, and I know the school committee pushed at that point to.
I think it's very common in Massachusetts.
To have one in every school. Okay, I'm just curious.
I think it's.
Yeah. I mean, and I think when you see that, it really emphasizes the need for it, it's incredible. My wife's a substitute in Burlington, now a teacher for thirty-eight years, and she's come home on another occasion, she says, I don't know how the nurses do it, because sometimes she works in the office, and she says, this is just a parade of kids going down there, you know, for different things, so.
I've gone to the middle school to meet Penny many times about this program before we went to Chicago, and we'd sit there at lunch, and we'd talk for five minutes, and they just keep coming in, they, they just, it's non-stop.
Well, here, I think this double vision thing though.
Karen's really good at eyes.
The one thing I've noticed also at the elementary level, at least at the hood school with Mrs. Bissin, is that she really cares about the kids. It's not just a, a number that comes in and really pays attention, and sometime, I drop my kids off at early care, and she always goes well and beyond to just address the kids as though she's walking into the school. So I think she has a lot of respect at that school, I appreciate that.
Thank you for letting us know. And I do love the kids.
I would say you're doing a good job. We've never, I've been on the school committee for nine years now, and I've never gotten one complaint about a school nurse. I've heard about teachers, I've heard about principals, I've heard about admin, I've never heard anybody say, that nurse sneaks! So you guys are doing a great job with everything you're dealing with on a daily basis, and it's much appreciated, I guess.
Is the school nurse the only one trained with an EpiPen, or are there other teachers that have?
No, we train the entire school.
The whole staff?
It was in the slides.
Yes, come on, Mr. Bissin. Was it in the slide?
Yeah.
It was your double vision.
Once in a while. I, I was seeing two, two.
We train cafeteria workers, we train the custodians there, you know, in the high school after-hours with after-school sports, we train the secretaries, we train everyone.
I asked if there was one nurse in school, because I saw ten of them sitting there.
You thought we had two nurses per.
I know, two for each school.
Karen? I just wanted to say, I'm really excited to see you all here. I have a master's in public health, and I genuinely appreciate and understand the burdens that you have, and I'm just really pleased that you have this program to work with and to sort of bring people together. I think I was most excited about the medical home, because that's huge for me and the work that I do every day, so I, I just am very encouraged that you're participating in this, especially as a pilot, and also to, to share with other communities and learn from other communities. It's really huge to sort of have that network, given all the stuff that you have to do, and then some. So I really appreciate that. I was wondering if I could ask for you to come back and talk about the Wellness Committee and all the work that you're doing, to sort of bring that to fruition at some point. I'd love to hear about it, just to know how we can better support you.
Can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My, my mouth is still hanging open from those numbers. Yeah, that was from September of two thousand.
January.
January of two thousand and fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good thing we're not paying you by the call.
That's not an estimate.
Give me double that.
I could double it. Eighteen, nineteen percent. Making sure you're awake. All right.
Give us that, and if you could, if you could publicize it in the transcript and the patch, I think that'd be great, because there's a lot of great information here that the community needs to, to learn.
Mrs. Bullard, well, so.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Patrick, are you gonna use this?
Hi.
Sorry. That's her. So next, I believe, we're gonna move to Patrick and Patricia, Patrick and Patricia. And I think they're gonna give us a report on the bullying prevention and intervention plan, but then give us an update. Just Patrick?
Patricia was here in support of the.
Patty was here for that.
You can call me Patricia.
Sorry, Patrick.
Wow.
So Patty was here.
Patty's ready for bullying.
I thought you were gonna help Patrick.
Superb.
This, we actually will touch on the Wellness Committee also. So we'll try, I've, thank you so much. Thanks.
I'd also like to run the fifty nurses of school here, they haven't left, I feel so excited to be in this audience.
We, uh, it was actually two thousand and ten when we were here last time, talking about our bullying prevention and intervention plan. As you remember, at that time, there was so much in the press and so much with the new state regulations about our bullying prevention and intervention plan. Just to recap a little bit of the history of our plan here, we, we had a great, we were always ahead of the curve at our time, and we were not reacting to the new laws and the mandates that were coming out. We had our group, it was called PAWS, still, still in effect, called Public Awareness and Understanding of Social Education. I know some of the folks in this room have been involved with the group over the years. And we were really in a great place, where we were talking about bullying, talking about all these issues about social education, well ahead of the curve. And I always like to give credit to those who came before that had that set up. We figured when, when these pieces came out, at that time, Superintendent kind of directed, said PAWS would be a great place to address some of these issues. So the PAWS group actually came together and worked very hard to create our draft of the bullying plan. That was completed in October of two thousand and ten, and you'll recall, we had a public comment period, where we had, it posted on the website, we brought it to school committee a few times for some readings and drafts, that was in the fall, October, November, two thousand and ten. We submitted the plan in December of two thousand and ten, and everything was accepted. There were a couple of little things we had to go back and fix to avoid being in the papers, if you remember, that the people that didn't get them in, but we met all those deadlines, got everything perfectly sealed. And that really led up to a great professional development, it was one of the days, in early January of two thousand and eleven, we had Dr. Elizabeth Englander come from the MARK, Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center for Bridgewater State. It was a fantastic presentation, really engaged our professionals, and really just sort of summed up all the work we'd done in the fall, and it was, it was great for folks, too, because, again, so much in the news that that year especially, it was on everyone's mind, and it's been great, and it's, it's ongoing, and, you know, the, the state has had, you know, awareness weeks and months and things like that, and bullying is still just as important as ever, and it's important for us to talk about it. It's not front-page news necessarily every day as it was at that time, but it's still something that's very, very important to us that we continue with. So a few updates that have, I wanted to pass along, there were some things that happened in two thousand and eleven and twelve. One important update was bullying consideration, when bullying is based on sexual orientation or gender identity and expression. And there was a lot of consideration given, and we work with our leaders and others, as you're conducting, you know, part of our procedure is to contact parents and let them know of a possible bullying situation. And this was just about raising awareness, a lot of bullying is centered around sexual orientation or gender identity. And it's just that sensitivity, that if you're calling home to a parent to alert them to a situation, you may be outing a child, you may be talking about something that the parents aren't aware of, and it's just really about being sensitive to those kind of issues. As much as you want to report fact and, and keep everyone safe, you also have to be very sensitive to, to the multiple facets of these situations. And so that's very important. And then obviously, paramount also is the, you know, understanding the intricacies of a student's feelings and behaviors, and so it's, it's part of a, a school team that involves the administrators, the leaders, the teachers, our health program, our nurses, about understanding so much that's coming out about sexual orientation and gender identity and expression. There's actually some new regulations, very recent, that we are, we are learning a lot more about, and we're gonna be sharing a lot more moving forward, because the state just released some regulations, just in the last few weeks, actually, about gender identity. And it's very interesting. The other piece is clarification, and just a reminder about the, it's the Technical Assistance Advisory for Special Education for Bullying Prevention and Intervention. So this talks about the law itself, and it emphasizes, I believe, seven and eight, standard seven and eight. It talks a lot about leadership and school-wide efforts, a big push, just a reminder that it's all about trying to change, you know, to help the culture of the school. It talks about when students are being bullied, you know, the first thing, the first thing about prevention is education. It's just a reminder about that. This specifically, though, is speaking about the social skills development for students with disabilities, students on the autism spectrum, when this disability affects their social skill development, and when the disability may result in vulnerability to bullying, harassment, and teasing. So again, really, as much as it is working with education plans for these students and IEPs, trying to come up with ways to help students who may be teased or bullied, may not have some of the social skills, to help them through their plans, to help. And I spoke with many leaders and Patricia Bullard about this, and we've been definitely addressing this for several years now, specifically in plans for kids with autism. But again, a reminder that, you know, a school-wide effort to help kids, the more kids understand about autism and other disabilities that, that may inhibit social skills, the more the whole culture understands and embraces these things, the less that there's gonna be a culture for, for bullying or teasing. So a few notes on the impact so far of our plan. Lots about professional development, we have continued professional development, you know, when our new staff comes in, we spend a good amount of time during our orientation about our bullying plan, we wanna make sure they understand the plan, the procedures for reporting, and basically what to do with all these situations. So we spend a good amount of time with that, and all of our staff are trained annually in the plan. And we also have other pieces of professional development or follow-ups. Dr. Englander was here, and it was wonderful, but it was a couple of years ago now, so we started, as we think, moving forward the next few years, we wanna bring some other professional development back specific to this. We also have some other channels for professional development, which I'll address in a, in a moment. The big piece, though, is about this culture of respect at all of our schools. We have No Name Calling Week, is celebrated at many of our schools each day, there's something, individually, you may have heard about this at some of the schools, but each day, they'll do something distinct to reinforce the idea of treating each other with respect. If you ask the principals, if you ask the students, this, some of this has come up in some of the data, from My Voice survey and some other surveys, there is a heightened awareness about bullying. So you might even see data that says, there's, you know, there's, there's still a lot of bullying going on, but sometimes that's just, we've, we've put so much of a focus on defining the terms and understanding what bullying is, and, you know, using terms like being an upstander, you know, bystander just watches something happen and does nothing, an upstander is a person who sees something wrong and reports it to an adult, and, you know, so because of that, we've, we've put so much focus on bullying as, as something we should all be concerned about, that we've really created a culture of, of upstanders. That is our goal. We've had a lot of conversations about data collection, there's going to be, part of our submissions to the state this year is going to include, specific to bullying incidents in school. But we're looking at, and we're working with our administrators to talk about, you know, the number of incidents reported on our forms, the number of instances that the principals then determine to be bullying after their investigation, and try to collect lots of data on that to see whether, you know, this, our plan has had an impact. Do you think that because we're reporting it more and we're, we're talking about it more, that you might see some more incidents? That doesn't mean that they're actually going to become bullying incidents, but that we're aware and we're doing our diligence in our investigations.
Patrick, what is, what is the state doing with that data? Will there ever be any kind of public disclosure about the number of bullying incidents, the type of bullying incidents, how the program is having an impact on bullying incidents? Do you know?
I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how that state, that state discipline record is.
Every year, there's an annual discipline report that is completed by each of the bullying principals that is submitted to the Department of Education. And this is the first full year of implementation of the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan. So I believe, I predict that we will see some kind of data collection, if not this year, in the very near future. But they collect data on all kinds of incidences that, you know, that take place in the schools.
But I would think to Patrick's point, initially, you're probably going to see a spike, because a lot more is getting recorded because more attention's being paid to it. However, they might not actually be determined to be, so there might be more reports, a few bullying incidents as, as time goes on.
I would actually say that may not be true, because you're reporting it for the first time, there may be a conservative reporting of the number of incidents that would be. I think that also there is nothing in the law that stipulates that bullying is reported, and in the regulations, it's very ambiguous as to what is there, which makes me nervous about, I'm sure, most districts.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely, it could go either way, I can definitely see that. Very interesting, you know, a piece of our report is that anonymous reporting is, is obviously an acceptable route, because sometimes people are nervous to come forward for many different reasons. So we try to create a culture where everyone is comfortable coming forward, but we do have that route. In the two and a half years, the anonymous reports are done through letter, and that comes to me as the title line coordinator. In the two years of this program, I've never had a letter. This morning, I got my first letter. So it's very interesting that I have this to share with you. And it's, it's great, I, I won't give too much information, but we did get the letter, I did pass it on to the proper administrators, it was not something necessarily on their radar, and now an investigation is going to begin. It does say we will not discipline solely on the basis of an anonymous letter, but that might start an investigation, that then witnesses will come forward and say something, and if there is something to be settled, you know, we at least were able to adjust the safety right away and then take steps. So it was, it was, to me, it was a good, we were able to see the, the plan in process today, and it went very well, and a great conversation with the administrators, and they're on top of it, I can say already, which is great. Something that we've really spent a lot of time on here, this started with our PAWS group, but we've done case studies and scenarios, so we've spent a lot of time with our PAWS group drafting some scenarios, things that parent professionals might have heard, something at the playground, or a teacher in the lunchroom, or, so we have scenarios, we run through these with our faculty at faculty meetings or, or department meetings, just to play out, what would you do in that situation? And some of them, you pretend you're the student, some you pretend you're a teacher, some you pretend you're an administrator, and it just helps us play this out. We then workshop some of those ideas with students, and I do know that the middle school was able to do this with students, they took time out of the day, they did this, and it was very successful, I'll report that. So that is a great professional development, it's hands-on exercise, and everyone gets involved, and you really play these out, and people get to ask great questions, and you really play out a scenario, because it's like a fire drug, you know, you wanna go through the, the practice so that you know what to do if something similar occurs. And just a reminder that all our forms are available online, but we also have them in the offices and the handbooks for folks to fill out. So just quickly, our PAWS group, this year, some of our goals, we do wanna look and review and update the plan, and make sure that it's accurate and up to date. We are doing book studies, every school is doing a book study throughout this year, we're reading the book Schools Where Everyone Belongs by Stan Davis, it's a fantastic book, it really sets up, it's really about changing your culture of your school, and talking about how we talk to kids, how we talk to each other, and, and how we give feedback to students for all these situations. And there's all sorts of scenarios and case studies. So each group is doing a, a small study group, six to ten people, and then that group is reporting back to the larger community in the school. It's, it's been very well received so far, so that's exciting. We engage in a lot of professional development, we work with the Middleship Partnership, uh, sorry, Middlesex Partnership for Youth, they have their secure conferences and, and some other conferences throughout the year, and PAWS always sends some representatives, we, we usually have at least two people from every school go to these events, and they're wonderful events. And the community outreach, we have a PAWS newsletter, where we reach out, we share information with the community, take information, we have some members from the community on our group, and we'd love to welcome more. We have representatives from all the schools, Pete and Marjane from the Rotary Club is a part of our group, but we'd love to get some more parents and folks involved, so that's great as well. And PAWS also is looking at, you know, our curriculum review, we wanna have, we're looking at MARK, which I mentioned before, Dr. Englander, has some great lessons, because we have programs like Open Circle, but we really wanna have bullying-specific, cyberbullying-specific lessons, in addition to some of these case studies and other cases. So that group is constantly reviewing our curriculum to see that it's, it's achieving what we hoped in the classroom. I'll speak just for a moment about the Wellness Committee, which we brought back together. So PAWS has really been active for the social, emotional understanding. The Wellness Group is a little bit about our physical and some other things. So Dr. Witz and Lois, this has been very active in this group as our volunteers, where we've been consulting with everyone. We reconvene, this group should have representatives from school nurses, physical activity staff, Claudia Brown's involved in that, school nutrition staff, and Anna McGovern has been a part of this group. We've worked with our, our nurses and Claudia Brown to help identify some parents and students to be a part of it. We, we should have a, a school committee representative, and so I've asked Superintendent Wallace to hopefully work with someone here to be a part of that group, I think would be great. Our community youth-serving agencies, we've contacted with Parks and Rec and with youth services to be a part of this group, so we're excited to work with all those people. Some of the things this group will do, will conduct a needs assessment about things that are necessary and needed in our schools, setting up some measurable, observable goals to promote student wellness, and we will annually report to the superintendent and the school committee about some of the progress made in achieving these goals and objectives. So one great thing that, that we thought, we all, several of us went to a, a presentation last spring, and we got talking at the table, and we thought, what a great idea to have a community-wide, something like, we called it NR Fit. And I was, I live in Waltham, and they have health. And I was, I live in Walthing, and they have Healthy Walthing, it's sort of a community campaign. It's the schools, it's the talents, and so just, that was the name. It's not been decided yet, but that was thrown out there as an idea. So whenever there's, you know, events down at the Ipswich River Park, that might be a piece of it. You know, maybe, you know, I've reached out to the Chamber of Commerce, maybe Taste of Metro North could be Healthy Taste of Metro North or something. So we're just brainstorming ideas to try and, yeah. So we're just brainstorming some ideas. But we would love to get folks involved and to be a part of this committee with some of those pieces. So this is a great group. I think everyone's very excited to be a part of it. It's a committee that's going to meet every year, and we hope to have someone involved from the school committee soon, so.
Patrick, if you, you know, I'm not saying this is the same exact thing, but if you modeled it on what like the library does with North Reading Reads, maybe it's like North Reading Walks, North Reading Runs, North Reading Jump, whatever North Reading's doing at the time. Hopefully, it's not North Reading Watches TV and Plays Video Games, because I don't think that would meet the criteria we're looking for here. But something like that, I think, would be, would be really good.
And we've been brainstorming just things. I know the police do something with running a fitness day, you know, it'd be great to just connect these things and just say, it's all a part of an overall community effort towards fitness and wellness, so I look forward to what we're working on.
Any other questions, comments for Patrick? I think this is great.
I would probably have to email you because I have a specific question.
Absolutely.
I've studied this every day.
I know, make Karen, we have a president.
Stop it.
Mr. Kujakji said that he might be interested.
There you go.
On the Wellness Command.
Great.
I do have one question. One important, but you didn't mention, I'm sure, as part of it is law enforcement.
Yes.
There was a lot of, you know, talk at the beginning of the implementation of the law of including law enforcement at the table, and I'm just wondering on what way they're engaged apart from the PAWS effort. I know they're up to it.
Sure, they were instrumental in the PAWS group. We've kept open communications with the police. It's been wonderful over the years. They were very much involved. When we drafted the plan, they were involved right from the get-go, and I'm sorry, thank you for reminding me of that, that I did mention that. And we've kept in constant communication about this, and it's a great relationship. There is a piece of the plan, whenever, if something is determined by the principal to be criminal, it gets referred instantly to the police, and we've had, you know, great back and forth so far with that, so.
I'd just like to add that on Saturday, I was here in Town Hall along with the Chief of Police, and we jointly presented a proposal to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee around the hiring of a full-time school resource officer. And I'm happy to say that after about an hour of conversation, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee members unanimously supported this initiative going forward. As a matter of fact, they suggested that we not wait until next year, that if the police chief can find funds in his budget this year, that we begin the implementation process. So Chief Murphy and I have been having these conversations since last March, and we're very happy to say that we think it's going to move forward for the next school year. And this person's roles and responsibilities will be better defined and brought to you as the school committee, but we know that this person will play a key role in prevention, intervention, education, and then remediation. So we're very excited about this.
I just want to add, Jim, too, that not every school department has this kind of relationship with the police department. A lot of school departments do not want the police involved in their business, and I credit Dr. Crowden and then obviously Superintendent Willis with fostering this type of relationship, which is a very good one. An open relationship, and the police department has been very, very helpful to us over the years.
Absolutely. That's fantastic, please to hear. We have great relationships with officers in the building, but this, I believe, will get them during the school day, constant access. This will be a very familiar face for, as a resource, which will be wonderful.
This person's sole job would be to be assigned to the five schools and working on various projects and, as needed?
That's correct. And again, once we flush out the details of roles and responsibilities with the administrative team, then we'll bring it back to you for your review and approval and input, because there might be something that you'd like to see that we didn't think of. So you'll have an opportunity to provide input this spring for implementation next year.
That's great. Very good. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Karen, are you ready to list the questions ready to go? I'll email them.
I'm sorry, it's my dissertation. What am I going to do?
As long as you send them on email.
Go be nice.
I like these chairs. They're ready to go around.
Thank you, Patrick.
We're going to be talking about goals. Anybody who wants to get out of here, get out of here now. Just go.
Right, this is, you did not want to hear the school committee's goals. I'm just telling you right now.
Your favorite card of the day.
I can get out myself, everybody.
You're just incorrigible.
He is. Okay, well, that was actually two really interesting.
I think so.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
See which proves what I do through the school.
Okay, I think next, I'm trying to, we're back on the MSBA SSBC update, Continued Business. I think I've presented most of the Continued Business, but I'll repeat again that we had a hearing tonight. We received a guaranteed maximum price for the construction of the school. The bottom line of all of this is we're looking, it's looking like we're going to be asking for $15.5 million to complete the project as planned. It's just there was some good back and forth with the community and the two committees that we met, mainly with the Selectmen, and at the end of the hearing, a vote was taken, and it was a 10-0 vote to support the project moving forward, support the additional funds. So before the superintendent gives her update, I don't know if anybody else in the committee wants to say anything to this point, or you can say after she gives her update. Catherine?
Thank you. As far as a construction update is concerned, as I have mentioned in the past, Mr. Bowers is on the site quite frequently, and I wasn't sure, Mr. Bowers, if there was anything you'd like to.
I wasn't there on Friday.
I wasn't either.
All I know is that Jerry told me that one day he was up there, and he said he sees a lanky guy walking out of the hole with a hard hat on, and it was Cliff. So I don't know if Cliff would even be working on a party. I'm not 100% sure.
As long as he's past.
I am on the site.
Yes.
I had actually a very, very good trip on Thursday, which was the last day I was there. They have buggies now, so you don't have to walk.
Do you have your own?
No, I don't, but I'm always escorted like everybody at some.
Yes.
But what has happened now is the big retaining wall, which is between the theater and rises up to where Main Street and the Media Center and the new offices go, has been partially formed as of Thursday. But the base for that is now quite a bit around the so-called B Building. And that wall will be formed soon, and I'm sure they're very anxious. They filled the area behind that partially, they can't fill obviously against it because it doesn't exist yet. But that's a, that's a critical element, and they've started to work on the foundations along the front, the entrance to the high school and the Media Center wall. So that's, that's moving along. That's, the footings for that are probably formed today, if they've got no snow, and they're pretty good removing snow there, so those will be coming right along. And it's, it's moving, moving ahead. The side of the road, the upper portion of the access road has, has been worked on. And in April vacation, they're going to do some work on the, on the access road up to it from high school up, doing some utility work there. So there's a lot of, a lot of activity as, we've seen they've pulled a great deal of the pile away, the unsuitable material, which is great to get rid of that.
Interesting, too. Friday, we canceled school, there was that mini Blizzard that we had. They were up there working the whole morning, and they actually did a pouring, a major pouring on the wall that, on Friday.
It was pretty miserable there on Thursday. It was pretty miserable, there's snow coming in, not accumulating much, but you're outside, the window, the window, the window, the snow is very baiting, and they kept it ongoing.
Next week should be cool. We should make sure we get some good pictures because we should start seeing some steel going up.
Well, coming on site.
Coming on site in the next few weeks, start seeing it go up, yeah. So.
Sounds good. Well, I won't reiterate what's already been mentioned. I do want to note that the third and final information forum will take place this Thursday evening, March 14th, at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. And the focus of this presentation will be on the guaranteed maximum price for the project, as well as a tax impact analysis. And the next Secondary School Building Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March 13th, at 4:00 PM in the high school modular cafeteria. It's been changed from tomorrow.
Wednesday at 4:00.
Wednesday at 4:00. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions or comments? Before we move on to Jerry's favorite item.
I think you should leave us in this discussion.
Next, we have our mid-year review of our school goals. And as all of you out there in the community know, we're never going to miss any of our school goals, right?
Ever.
We are a conscientious school committee.
You are a very conscientious school committee.
That sets very easy goals.
I'd like to propose a goal of achieving all our goals. That maybe is.
So let's go to that action plan.
It's not really goals. It's a plan for achieving goals.
I can't really see them that well on my.
Would you like to take them on table?
Yes.
I have notes.
I was hoping you were going to say, would you like me to handle this?
Do you want me to do this?
Yes.
Okay.
The chairman requests that the superintendent lead us through this exercise.
I saw that coming.
We have two minutes.
Okay. The first goal focuses on the school committee demonstrating a keen understanding of their role and working within the law. And so one of their major strategy areas is policy. So I can tell you that the first bullet, a systematic review and revision of sections of the school committee policy manual is ongoing. The policy subcommittee has one more section to review. This will conclude an entire review of the policy manual.
A++ for the policy.
This is Section J. It's 140 pages long, and we will begin this tomorrow.
Do any of the school committees do this? Like, I don't know, seriously.
They do.
Really, they do?
Well, the last place I worked did, but maybe just two school districts.
It's a lot like reading the dictionary.
Yes.
It is. And so.
Dictionary is more interesting.
Are there any openings on the computer?
Yes.
One for you. So again, the other bullets refer to the work that the policy subcommittee is doing, which is developing and approving new policies, researching and reviewing policies that we don't have in place. There are two here that have to do with handheld devices and social media. I'm in conversation with Patrick, who is the chair of the Technology Committee, and they will provide guidance to us when the time is appropriate for developing policies around handheld devices and social media. But right now, they're laying the groundwork for that recommendation.
I think one of the issues we have there is how quickly the two areas are evolving. And if you set a policy today, it's probably, in three months, it's going to be out of date. And I think we need to try to figure out a way to have a policy that takes into account those changes that we expect to see.
Yes. So Mr. Daley and I have had those conversations and.
Do many other schools have policies?
They do, but they have, they find they have to revise them quite often because of the changing landscape around bring your own device, handheld devices, district-provided tablets versus bringing your own from home. So we need a policy that's broad, that protects the district from any risk or exposure, yet doesn't limit what we're able to accomplish on a day-to-day basis.
I think my concern more, though, is on the, is on the social media front, and I don't know what kind of policies we have. I mean, I guess right now, we're just kind of using common sense policy for, for staff, correct?
That's correct.
And I guess for, for students also.
I can tell you that Mr. Daley has put out advisories reminding our staff members about the appropriateness of boundaries when it comes to social media.
Right, that's, right, that's the area, I think the biggest area of concern is, because I know that in other school districts, they allow teachers to, for example, set up Facebook pages that the class then uses to get homework assignments, to have conversations about an assignment on which they're working or something like that. And I, I mean, there's a lot of gray area there, but I think there's a lot of positive to be taken from it, too. So I, I mean, I understand the devices is probably more tricky, but I think the face on, on the social media, I'd like to see some progress there this year.
So we'll have a conversation again about bringing forward a recommendation regarding that. And then, as you can see, the last bullet talks about the implementation of the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan, and you had that this evening. The next section is strategic planning. There was one action under this, which you accomplished back in October, and that was to approve NRPS 2016, the Plan for Strategic Continuous Improvement, excuse me. The next strategy is evaluation. There is an evaluation subcommittee that is on target with the work that is being done, continuing with the school committee's self-assessment process, review this process and revise as needed. And then, it had been mentioned and suggested that representation of this school committee make a presentation to the next MAS, MASC conference that's held in November around the success of this committee with its self-evaluation and goal-setting process. So I await for that RFP to come out and see who will make that presentation.
One, one thing on the self-evaluation. The last subcommittee we had, evaluation subcommittee, you had a forum that was much less dense than the forum that we've been using, and so is that, will we go over that in our next?
Yes. When we go through the next, the dates for, for setting a subcommittee meeting, you'll see that I proposed a date for the evaluation team to come together. I contacted Mr. Mike Gilbert, the executive director of MASC, and he sent me the electronic copy of that document and said, use it at will. So we have that, it's time for us to get together to set a timeline for the self-evaluation and use that.
I know I've ignored your email about setting a date. I know Mr. Bowers got back to it and I didn't, in case you were going to spring that on.
I was.
When are we going to do that for, like, electronic survey this time, like, like Survey Monkey? Were we going to do that, or are we going to just use Excel spreadsheet?
The new one is, is much, we'll have to show you the new one. It's much easier.
Cooler?
Oh, no, it's much easier, it has a lot less, well, when we, I think when the subcommittee meets, and then we can bring it and decide whether we want to go a different way, but it's much, it's much less complex than the old one last year.
We were much more intense than it being required.
Yes.
I think it'd be surprising to see this document. It's predicated on all the work that had been done previously on the use of that rubric, but I think they came to the same conclusion that this committee did, that less is more.
Right.
And so when you see it, you'll say, well, this looks like the work we just finished.
It's, a lot of people stepped beyond where we, where we stepped.
Right, where we stepped, and we said, we shouldn't, we stepped.
Very intense, a little less intense, this time now, even less intense, but probably more appropriate.
Yeah.
Again, under evaluation, and also speaks to approving the NREA Educator Evaluation System for Implementation next year. That work is ongoing. Mr. Webster sits on that subcommittee, and the administrative evaluation system is in process. I actually, I'm meeting with the, the entire leadership team this Thursday to review the collective bargaining language, similar to what we're doing with the NREA regarding the educator evaluation system for administrators. So I will be coming to you sometime this spring with that proposal as well. Under communication, it says expand communication efforts. I don't know if you want to speak to that.
I just think that the one thing that has changed, it's not only a matter of more communications, it's that I think the district thinks about communications before it implements new programs, as opposed to implementing a program and then communicating about it. So communications is an integral part of just about everything we're doing here, and I think that's hugely important in a school system, so.
Just like to let you know that I recently received my second tutorial, and I plan on launching my superintendent's blog, so that's.
Well, that, I'm not so crazy about.
So I'm, I'm ready to, to launch that, again, for my efforts at improving communications about the day-to-day aspect of what takes place in a school district.
Maybe you could have a guest blog from the chairman, too.
That would be wonderful. Stick it for Pat. Stick it for Pat. Under Human Resources, this is something that the committee has been working on through NRPS 2016. Explore adequate staffing to support instructional technology and to identify the staffing necessary to carry out increased data reporting. Again, that is all included in NRPS 2016 and has been reflected in the FY14 budget vision. If we move on to the next strategy, it's Professional Development. And we put this creation of an orientation for newly-elected school committee members on hold via the Evaluation Subcommittee because we haven't had any new members. So we have a prototype, and we explored what has been done in the past, and we're ready to move that forward on an as-needed basis. As far as the Secondary School Building Project, the school committee really hasn't done anything? Joking. No, everything that has been identified.
Wow, that's so mean.
Everything that has been identified through the Action Plan has been more than accomplished. And that includes providing informational presentations, providing regular progress updates, supporting the work of the Secondary School Building Committee. That's happening on an ongoing basis. The next goal focuses on the school committee developing and approving a clear financial plan that uses the budget document as the roadmap for fiscal stability, strategic planning, program continuity, and student achievement. And the bullets under Budget talk about approving an FY14 budget that adequately meets district requirements for optimal student achievement. This is in process. We updated the, it should say, three-year budget vision that was presented to you in the fall through the NRPS 2016. And you are working with the owner's project manager to identify any increased cost to operations. That's in process because, as we had mentioned previously, we're waiting for the 100% construction document completion in order to identify what that increase in operations may be at the end of the project.
I was going to suggest that at some point, once the special town meeting is over, the election is over, we probably should meet at some point with representatives of the project. I mean, they're not going to have specifics. I mean, we know there's going to be costs, for example, related to the wastewater treatment plant. What are some of the things that we're going to have to factor into our budget, and how do we work that moving forward? So I think at some point, we need to meet with Jeff or, I think, would Jeff be the person?
The OPM?
Yeah.
The OPM.
Yeah.
Right. And we have, again, on our timeline, we have taken that out through the month of June. So as you mentioned, I think spring would be an appropriate time.
And I do think that, like Wayne and Carl have a handle on some of this because a lot of it is under our control, for example, custodial staff. You know, we may need more, we may figure there may be ways that in some days, some cases, you have fewer, but you may need one or two more. We just don't know. So all that thinking, I think, has to, that all has to be in place a year prior to the school opening because we have to start figuring into the budget when we're involved.
And the increased square footage of the scope of the design will have, I think, a specific impact on staffing and the need for staffing.
Right, so our next budget, not this budget working out, but '15, will have to encompass all of, well, not all these items, but at least the high school-related.
That's correct. That's correct. Under Finance Planning Team, the achievement of this action is ongoing. You, as a committee, continue to collaborate monthly with town boards, the town administrator, and the town accountant. And you are developing a school district budget supported by the members of the finance planning team.
I'll just say there that you read so often of dysfunction in other towns, and Jerry brought up earlier our cooperation with the Police Department. Those meetings aren't always easy, those finance planning team meetings, but the cooperation helps us get through a lot of issues that would be a lot more difficult if we didn't have that finance planning team.
It's made a huge difference in the relationship between the boards. Absolutely. Positively. I mean, the time I've been here, we didn't have it when I first started. It's a big, big difference.
The next goal is the Educational Program Goal. The school committee establishes an overall education plan and provides a framework and environment which supports the success of this plan. Excuse me. Under the first strategy, under Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment, using reliable data to measure effectiveness of curriculum and instruction, you had a presentation on the DART tool that's provided through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the kinds of data that is available to you there to do a comparative analysis around demographically similar communities and North Reading. Remain current with the alignment to the Common Core. Patrick Daley will be making a presentation later in this school year around what's taking place in this school district regarding alignment to the Common Core and our own curriculum. And I can just tell you anecdotally, a lot of work has been done. Patrick updates me regularly. Increase curriculum and instruction presentations to the school committee, that's happened on a regular basis. You've had many presentations around new initiatives in this district and actually had an opportunity to experiment.
I have to say, those have been awesome. Bringing the students and the teachers into, into the meetings to show exactly what they're doing, those have been great. I think those have really been great.
Those are tremendous educational opportunities for the kids that participate.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Agreed.
We got some to, that sounds like.
Right.
That was awesome.
And you are remaining current with the implementation of the educator evaluation system through the ongoing negotiations with the NREA and soon the administrators.
And we actually, just, we're moving along, we're at the point now where we're going through forms and we've pretty much gotten through the meat of the negotiations. We're going through the different forms and whatever other things that are part of the, in the rubric, et cetera, that are part of the evaluation process.
That's correct. And I'm very pleased to say it's been a very collaborative process with the teachers in the North Reading Public School District. The second strategy is Professional Development. Patrick Daley came to you and made a presentation to you around the Professional Development Program. So that strategy, sorry, that action has been realized. And Restore Sufficient Resources and Schedule Flexibility. Through NRPS 2016 and the FY14 budget, you've addressed restoring some of those funds at this particular time. You've also approved a school calendar next year that is meeting the needs of Professional Development. So I would say that they are being realized as well. Under Instructional Technology, the three strategies or actions that have been identified have to do with adequate staffing to support instructional technology integration, identifying resources to support technology staffing and infrastructure, and supporting the acquisition and implementation of additional instructional technology, again, through NRPS 2016 and included in the FY14 budget, as well as the Capital Improvement Plan that was submitted to the New Capital Improvement Planning Committee. All of these initiatives have been addressed and are ongoing. The next goal is Family and Community Relations. School committee engages stakeholders and other citizens through open, transparent communication and opportunities for feedback resulting in a positive image of the school district. Again, we're revisiting this communications action or strategy. Expand communications and write periodic informational articles during the budget process. I can tell you that Mr. Nelson has the article for this week in the transcript, and his focus is the budget process.
Way to go, Carl.
So it will be there on Thursday. Community Partnerships, understand the role of school councils. There had been some discussion at the beginning of this school year that various school committee members would be visiting school councils at their own discretion. And you've also, just at the last school committee meeting, had a chance to take a look at and review all of the minutes of the school council meetings to bring you up to speed with what they're addressing through their school council meetings. The second bullet, I need to ask the committee how you'd like to proceed. You indicated a request for two presentations from the North Reading representative to the school committee for the Metropolitan Regional Vocational High School, and we did not have a presentation in October. I was wondering if you would like a presentation schedule for this spring?
We did have the Superintendent came in and Mrs. Diamond came in at one point, correct? You know what would be good? I don't know if we'd need a full report versus us asking for updates in specific areas, like how many North Reading students there, what are they studying, what are some of the new programs? So maybe I can put together a list and send to you. And one of the other issues I have is I know they had a fire there this year.
Yes, they did.
And what kind of impact did that fire have on the school? And one of my biggest worries are when are we going to see a request for a new school? And, because that's going to have an impact on this community at some point. So somewhere down the road, we might should get them in here. So I'll put together a list of things.
That would be great.
And if you want us, you know, actually, what I'll do is I'll just submit, send that around to the committee, and then I'll send it on to you.
Okay.
If you don't have anything.
Can I make a recommendation here?
Sure.
I know we're reviewing goals, but it's great if we have the representative come to us, but why don't we go to them?
Be good to visit them, too.
Yeah. We know nothing about them.
I'd love to visit that school.
You know nothing.
Well, that's great.
I don't either. Karen, I don't either.
I would love to just understand it better.
You don't know anything either.
I've been there.
When?
Huh? I've been inside that building.
Really?
It's a mess, too.
Yeah, I know.
I'm not just saying, I like saying they have commit regional committee meetings and, you know, it's nice when they come here, but it's always to give us something, not the other way around.
That's a good idea. If we could get their meeting schedule.
Yes.
Yeah, then we might be able to. We might have a little time to show.
I will bring that to the next meeting or send it to you electronically.
Okay, that's great.
On the next page, still under Community Partnerships, Request Middle School, High School Building Project Informational Presentations. This is ongoing and exceeds what you had identified. Work to Improve Relationships with Local Businesses and Organizations, including the North Reading, Reading Chamber of Commerce. I met with the new Executive Director informally, and I mentioned to her that I'd love to come to some of the meetings. She said that what would be more appropriate is she would keep me updated regarding public events and make sure that I know when they're taking place so that I can go into those and be part of those as opposed to ongoing meetings.
But again, one thing I would like to say, and I think the committee talked about this before, is can the chamber play a role in helping us to get more businesses involved with the schools? Like with the, what's the robotics company we work with down there?
Kiva.
Like Kiva, other, other companies that, and they don't have to be robotics, they can be any kind of companies that have things that they could bring into the school and...
Breathing.
Breathing.
Yes.
Right, HP, yeah, so.
And again, the Rotary sponsored the Taste of Metro North, so there was a lot of members of the school committee community in attendance at the Taste of Metro North.
Right.
And that was a very positive partnership in having conversations with members of the Rotarians around the fundraising that they do and how that benefited the students of North Reading last year through the North Reading Education Foundation.
I would say we're doing pretty well on our goals here.
I'd give us a 9.
I mean, no, we're actually doing better than we used to do.
We're going to have to set entirely.
I know, we are, because these are too, they ain't too easy.
Jerry, we can't just say, let's continue.
Right, we're going to have to set goals, Jerry, that challenge you.
I'd say, I'd give us like a 93.
No, I think even higher.
It's pretty low.
I give the Policy Subcommittee 100.
150.
I would think a 110.
Awesome.
All right. Good job. Any questions on the goals? I think we're doing great and moving ahead. It's amazing when you set out to accomplish some things and yet actually achieve that. Well, it's not amazing, but.
That is a surprise.
Happens every day. Yeah. Okay. Next. We don't have bills and payroll because we're moving to the 21st century. Mr. Nelson, would you like to address that?
I sure would. Signatures are so old-fashioned nowadays.
Yes.
I'd like to thank the five members of the school committee.
Four.
80% of this committee.
I still go in. I'm just trying to get out of your office.
But last week, we had our trial electronic signature process. Are we jumping ahead in the agenda item?
Did we miss something?
Yeah. The superintendent's goal.
Ah, let me hold up.
It's whatever direction.
I really didn't want to go.
I was hoping for a miracle.
I didn't count.
Apparently, that's not going to happen.
You were slow on the trigger there, Kathy.
No, I handed out the papers.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Great.
This is a two-part process. I'm going to give you a very brief synopsis of where we're at and what needs to happen next. That front page is called the Proposed Pilot Implementation Timeline, and I just want to point out the changes, too. If you go down to Cycle Step 3 and Cycle Step 4, you had asked me the last time I came before you, because this is about a 16-month process, to come up with multiple goal review opportunities and an opportunity for you to, for me to implement the plan and collect evidence. So you'll see 3 and 4A with dates associated, 3 and 4B with dates associated for review, and 3 and 4C with the end-of-cycle and semi-revaluation report taking place in June of 2014. So I think that this accomplishes what you had requested in terms of three opportunities for a review of goals as well as evidence.
And the semi-revaluation report is what we feed back to you as the report on your performance based on the goals.
Yes. You'll also have an opportunity to provide feedback to me when we go through this goals review periodically. The next page, on the back of that front page, just takes you through the annual cycle and what constitutes the actions taken during that cycle. So I've gone through a self-assessment. That's something that I do on my own. And tonight, I'm going to talk to you about goal setting, which is Step 2. So if you just look at the next page, I'm going to give you a little bit of an update of what I did around self-assessment and what are some of the next steps. So what I did was I reviewed indicators for each of the standards that you will use to evaluate me. There are four standards, and the rubric that's aligned to each one of those standards. And then I also took a look at the MCAS data that focused on the percent of students scoring coefficient or advanced at all assessed grade levels in ELA Math and Science. I took a look at the student growth percentiles at all grade levels assessed over the last five years. And I took a look at the student growth, I'm sorry, I said student growth percentiles as well as the CPI, the Composa Performance Index. I also took a look at NRPS 2016 and the 2012, 2013 School Committee Goals. Now, what's required under the new educator evaluation plan is that the superintendent and as well as all educators, teachers, administrators, set one student learning goal, one professional practice goal, and two to four district improvement goals. I'm now required to bring these goals before you this evening for your import and endorsement. And particularly around the district improvement goals, I put five of them before you. You may decide that you want me to only focus on two, three, four, or all five. And then what I need to do after that is come back to you with an educator, a fully-developed educator plan that includes action steps underneath each goal, timelines, and benchmarks for accomplishing that goal, and then the evidence that will be collected to show you how that goal is being accomplished. And I have to have that multi-page educator plan ready for you, and I plan to do that for next time. Because if you go back to that first page, you'll see that the whole analysis, goal setting, and plan development takes place during March 2013.
And Jerry, this is the good news. We actually are spreading this out over two different meetings. So in case you can't make it to the next one.
Well, there's some volatility.
On the district improvement goals, the only one I have a question about is the first one because that seems so subjective. I don't know how we can measure whether, I just have a hard time with that.
All right.
Sounds specific enough.
Yeah, I just.
So if we start with the first one, the student learning goal, I have set a student learning goal of the median MCAS student growth percentile for mathematics will increase from 2012 to 2013 and from 2013 to 2014 in at least four out of six grade levels. Even though there are seven grade levels assessed, there's not a student growth percentile for grade three because you need two years' worth of data in order for a student growth percentile to be established. So what I did was I charted out five years' worth of data, and that's the number of years where student growth percentile data has been gathered by the Department of Ed. So, and I focused on mathematics because I found that to be our area of greatest need.
So is it fair to say that we haven't had improvements in four out of the six grade levels in previous years? Or in some years, we have, some years, we haven't?
Exactly. Some years, we have, some years, we haven't. But what the Department of Ed has set is a 51 as their numeric value for where we want to be with our SGP at all grade levels in all content areas. And so right now, four out of our six grade levels have an SGP that's lower than 51.
Okay.
So I'm looking at aggregate data as well as data specific to each of the schools and each of the grade levels.
And so the goal is to get them all to 51 within.
Or higher.
Or higher, right.
Or higher.
Okay.
Okay? And so tying the professional practice goal to the student learning goal, I indicated I indicated that the superintendent will improve her skills at debriefing classroom observations done jointly with principals, focused on mathematics in at least one quarter of her classroom observations, and follow-up discussions with principals. What's going to be required of all administrators but the superintendent is to, is to do joint observations with the principals in the classrooms. So in order to tie my professional practice goal to my student learning goal, I'll be focusing on mathematics as often as I can and collecting evidence around our inter-rated reliability and debriefing skills that we develop as we move through this process together. Which brings us to the first district improvement goal. A lot of the work that's being done this year is on professional development, calibrating our ability as administrators to be able to take a look at a piece of instruction and indicate what the student is doing and what the teacher is doing as we look at a particular indicator under a particular standard, and then calibrate the kind of feedback that we would give back to an instructor around what was observed. So we're watching videos and we're calibrating our ratings around providing feedback. So when you take a look at what's expected at the proficient level on the rubric for all four standards for a teacher, there's an opportunity here for us to make sure that we have developed a common understanding of what it is we're supposed to be looking at, what we're supposed to be measuring, and the kind of feedback that we should be giving to our educators around what we saw and what additional information we need in order to make eventual judgments down the road around educator evaluation.
All that said, I still don't see how we measure that.
So you measure it by the level of alignment between the two.
But, but what do we look at to?
I, well, I have the same issue with the first one, but I mean, how, how close do we want this to be a smart goal?
How we make it a smarter goal is through the action planning process. So when you see the different actions.
Okay, so, all right.
You haven't seen those yet.
Right, all right, we haven't seen the action yet.
These are just general goals.
Can we still reject them after you show us the actions, or once you start down the path, then you have to?
Um, you can reject them. There's a great deal of work that will go into developing the educator plan because each action is associated with a timeline, a benchmark, and evidence collection.
Okay.
So if we're on the right path, I will continue to develop. But if there's a goal here that you say, I don't want you to touch that goal, I'm not going to spend hours developing an educator action plan.
I think it's fine, I just, I'm just having a little bit of a hard time figuring out how we're gonna measure it, that's all. But you're gonna give us the action, so, okay.
Right, it's, yeah, I'm, it's, it's my responsibility to provide you with the action and the evidence.
Do you want to do all these goals? Are you gonna do them anyway?
Part of the process is for you as a committee to take a look at these district improvement goals and either say we want all of those done or prioritize two, three, four.
Two, three, and four have to happen. Well, they, right, basically? I mean, you need to get those done.
What's that?
Two, three, and four, that half the teachers be evaluated.
Yes, the first one is, is, I think, critical to the success of this implementation of the whole entire model.
I get what you're saying, all right.
Because if we're not all on the same page, we're going to make people crazy in trying to understand what it is we expect of them. So the first one says, "By June two thousand fourteen, principals and administrators' ratings of classroom instruction will reflect a greater shared understanding of what classroom teaching and learning entails when it's done at the proficient level." So the second one says, "By June two thousand fourteen, at least half of our teachers will be evaluated using the new educator evaluation model. By June two thousand fourteen, all administrators will be evaluated using the new educator evaluation model. By May two thousand fourteen, a common model for response to intervention will be identified and ready for implementation in September two thousand fourteen in all five schools." That is something that we have included in NRPS two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, and I think that's critical.
"And year three of NRPS two thousand sixteen, a plan for continuous improvement will be supported and implemented by June two thousand fourteen." That's really big.
I think he's reasonable.
Last one is huge.
Yeah.
Right, and so pieces of one, two, three, and four are embedded in that fifth goal, but we are going to move forward and implement year three anyway.
Yeah.
I would just say for the first one, we need to figure out how to measure that, but it doesn't matter. Okay with it.
Yeah, and Jim. Anyone else?
So move forward and develop action plans on our five district goals.
Yes. And then we'll talk about these again at our next meeting, right?
Yes.
Before the special time meeting?
Yes, the meeting at six P.M.
Six P.M., right.
Yes. And it's.
Any questions?
It is a learning process.
Yes. Okay, Carl, now we can move to the all-exciting electronically-signed documents.
Well, I think that this nice meeting is the first time in fifty years we haven't had a red folder for the school committee to sign off on accounting, payroll.
Still on the agenda.
It is. We're gonna update this agenda.
Oh, that's right.
Well, it, no, but truth be told, when the, when this was developed, we hadn't finished our test last week. And so last week was the sample test. Thank you to Mr. Kazakhchi, Ms. Ercetti, Mr. Webster, Mr. Bowers.
Jerry's interested in what we're doing.
Thank you for your oral support.
Yes, Jerry, thank you.
It is all great.
I had one problem with it.
Did you?
The second time, I had select signature again. It didn't remember my signature.
Didn't?
Okay. Which I thought was kind of strange.
Okay, I'll look at that. A reminder to the committee that we're talking about electronic signatures that we now use to sign off on our legal documents and our payroll documents. The committee, of course, can select, if you give me your signature on white piece of paper, I can upload that so you can actually see your own personal signature instead of one of the sample signatures. You don't need to do that, but if you wish to.
Carl, are we, are we taking that next step in paying everything electronically also, or are we still printing out checks?
Ah, still printing out checks.
We're moving. We're moving to that direction, right?
You know, this is, that would, of course, be initiative more from our brethren here at Town.
Oh, yeah, because it's related to the, what's the system we put in?
UNIS.
UNIS system, yes, so we don't have electronic.
We have the capability, but we need to do that. There are some changes happening in the accounting system, I won't go into detail, but I'll just give you the highlight of it. We're going to a web-based accounting system. We're using the same accounting system, but we're moving from a client, a desktop client-based system to a hosted system, so that's happening this spring. And that will allow us to perform work at any computer terminal, whereas now you have to be at your home terminal to do it. So that's a big advantage.
Yeah.
So when we sign all these bills, are we still printing them out with a check? Or, I'm not sure how this works.
Well, what happens is, you know, you may not be aware of this, but the selectmen also have to countersign all of the school batch warrants as well. So what happens is at the completion of us collecting three signatures on Tuesday, three more on Thursday, we electronically provide that information to the Town Finance Director who incorporates that into the selectmen's signature process. They also do it electronically now. So what happens is the school financial work is kind of subsumed within the same warrant. They see the same thing you do, it's just bigger. Yours is just the school, the town's is the school and town. Having said that, we're eighty percent of the package.
Yeah, exactly.
But they countersign it after you do.
And then checks are cut.
And then checks are cut out of this building.
Printing a check, yeah, not printing the entire invoice.
No, no. Checks are still cut out of this building. We don't print checks at our school department, nor do we print payroll checks at the school department. We're also, by the way, hopefully this spring going to a non-advice process on payroll checks. That's something we'll deal with internally, but typically, as employees, you get an advice showing you the withdrawals. The town is hoping to do away with that system and give everybody a username and password into the UNIS system so employees can access their check stubs electronically instead of printing them in the street.
Yeah.
That's gonna happen this spring. We have to work with our employee unions on that, but that's going to happen. But thank you to the committee, I'll check on that. This week, we're going live. So last week was the, was the sample, effective tomorrow afternoon. We'll see the first payroll, first live AP batch followed by Thursday. And hopefully, this will work going forward.
I'm nervous, I thought we were live last week. Now that I know we're live this week, now I'm nervous about it. I know. All right, great, thanks, Carl. Minutes, we don't have any.
No.
To review. Budget update, Carl, I think same issues that we've been facing all year, right?
Yes, briefly, you know, I, there isn't too much to say, but I hope the committee would understand that that's good news. There are no major issues that we're confronting in the budget process this year as we're moving forward. The budget you see now consists of eight months out of the twelve months of the fiscal year. I think at the end of the year, we're gonna find that our payroll personnel budget will, will be right on, will be within a tenth of a percent. And we'll have very little left over, or we won't be underwater on the payroll side. It's the expense side that always has the unknowns. We continue to carry a deficit in special education, but this is the time where we're really carefully watching expenses and looking at some of the budget lines that contain buffers that allow us to pay off the special ed problems. As always, we hope to carry some funds forward to FY fourteen to ameliorate any issues that we have there. I don't know if there's any questions, but we're really pretty much the same place we've been the last couple of months.
Any questions? Great. Kathy, staffing.
Yes, including your packet is a mid-year staffing report. It extends through February twenty-eighth. So I just wanted to give you an idea of some of the changes that have taken place from September to the end of February. In, in a nutshell, we've had ten leaves of absences, six resignations, two retirements, and three changes in assignment. So on this document, you can see the name of the staff member of the school, the position that person held, the type of staffing change, and whether or not a replacement. So there are actually several new hires as well. I believe there are six, seven new hires. So it just gives you a sense of, of how we function as an organization regarding staffing at the mid-year point.
I see Mr. Belzbeck.
He is.
That is awesome.
We're thrilled.
That's great.
Yes.
That's great.
Working in the elementary school level.
That's great.
Yes, it really is. Are there any questions on this staffing report?
The only question I have is how difficult is it to replace people when they leave in the middle of the year like this?
Well, it's a process.
Yeah.
We do advertise. Sometimes we post internally to make sure that, well, we always actually post internally as required by our agreements with our associations. And depending upon the nature of the position determines how difficult it is to fill that position mid-year.
Yeah.
So a low-incidence position like a speech and language pathologist is very difficult to fill at any time, never mind mid-year. So we, we do the best that we can. We advertised on school spring, that was a wise investment this district made some time ago, and we use that extensively when looking to fill an open position.
Any other questions on staffing? Okay, I don't, do we have any bids and donations?
None at this time.
Subcommittee updates? I think we, um. We have athletic policy, uh, athletic subcommittee. We met on last Tuesday and the major topic, the main topic of conversation was the equality issue that we've been looking at between the softball and baseball teams. And I believe Mr. Vannesi is gonna provide an update of what we discussed at the, at the meeting on Tuesday.
And feel free to pitch in, Mr. Webster, whenever you want to, but, okay. Yeah, as Mr. Webster said, the, we've had some, I don't want to cuss my ass complaints, but some members of the community have raised some equity issues with the softball team. I've actually had some informal discussions with the people in the softball community, youth softball, high school softball, and they've raised to me some issues that I thought the, excuse me, athletic subcommittee should address. Now, the athletic subcommittee is made up of Marty Tilton from the Recreation Department, Rita Mullin from Recreation, Dave Johnson, our Athletic Director, Superintendent Willis, John Bernada, Principal, John Norton, President of Athletic Boosters, Mel, Karen has attended a couple of meetings, but Mel and myself. So some of the things that were raised were the, the equality of playing conditions. We took a look at the playing fields, which is obviously one of the major areas that we wanted to, to address. And we had a review from Marty Tilton, who's responsible for maintaining the fields at the, partially responsible for maintaining the fields at the little school and at the high school. And he gave us a review of the annual maintenance schedule of the baseball and softball fields that was conducted by Parks and Recreation. And essentially, he said that there's, there's really no disparity in the way that they treat the field, that both fields are mowed at least, I think, once a week. Fields are groomed again when necessary. I think that what goes on at the high school field is more apparent sometimes because people drive by there and they see, you know, the, the moas out there, the, the crew out there working on the fields. But according to Marty, that the fields are pretty well maintained on an equal basis. So the little school uses softball field number one for their, sorry, yeah, the little school uses the softball field, varsity softball field for recess. And one of the issues that we raised was if possible to not have that type of daily activity on the field to help preserve the field better, certainly during softball season. So the superintendent met with Ms. Molly, the principal of the little school, and I think that Ms. Molly's agreed to have a change in recess with keeping the kids off of those fields during the softball season to prevent the wear and tear that you saw, particularly in the outfield area of the, of the field.
Yeah.
Restroom facilities was raised. And of course, at the high school, it's not the greatest either. I mean, basically, at the high school.
They run up to the gym.
They have to run up to the gym area and use the restrooms of the gym. The little school, again, was a problem because the little school basically was closed, all locked during practices and, and games. So what, again, Ms. Molly, through the superintendent, agreed to do was to give the softball coach Shay Keeford to gain access to the little school front door so the members of the team could actually use the school bathrooms just as we do at the high school if they needed to. And I know this is a problem because I've been over there enough to see that there was just no access to bathrooms. Also, the coach will have, receive a key and unlock the portable bathroom that's outside, so the public, if necessary, can use that. And again, I think this is pretty, pretty equal to what the, the baseball team has. As far as access to the facilities at the high school, certainly in the spring, early season, both the baseball team and the softball team, particularly when season starts next Monday and the weather's like this outdoors, they use the gymnasium. So the coaches are gonna get together, probably with the athletic director, and schedule their practices in the gym. This has always taken place, and to the best of my knowledge, both teams have shared the gymnasium without a lot of problems over the years. The, there's also a schedule that they put together for the indoor batting cages, which are located below the gymnasium, again, used for both baseball and softball. And they're gonna try to coordinate those schedules so that we're just getting equal and balanced time in the, in the batting cages. Uniforms. It just so happened that, you know, prior to us even having these discussions with people from the softball community, that the athletic director had ordered new junior varsity and varsity softball, uh, uniform tops. So those new uniforms are part of the ongoing rotation cycle to update uniforms for all of our sports. We try to do that on a pretty regular basis. And I will say that most of our uniforms are always, I mean, they look pretty good. They, they get to the end of the cycle and they need to be changed. On occasion, we do have boosters clubs that help pay for uniforms. I know that's happened in hockey over the years because they're very, very expensive. But generally, our uniforms are in pretty good shape. We have, we're looking at improvements to equipment and facilities, still under review.
Jerry, I think one of the things there we, we're gonna research and look into is dugout-type facilities at the little school varsity field.
I went to the little school today and I took a look at progress on the wall that's being worked on over there. And they're making, they're making a lot of progress. It's kind of a mess, but, you know, they're gonna need to do some landscaping, obviously. It's muddy over there. But I think that the wall, as far as the, the field number one counts, is pretty much in place.
Yes.
And so that field is, you know, it's done. And they're progressing up towards field number two. They got that all ton of pop, but they were placing the blocks today on that. And I looked at the, the dugout situation, and the way those things are constructed, it would be a very easy solution to take a, a top and permanently.
That's made for that, right?
Yeah, you know, I'm talking about a top that was designed specifically for that and put it over the roof. You could even drop it down the back because the way those, those dugouts are, they're chain-linked dugouts.
Right.
And that would work perfectly over there. The only problem is if you put it down the back, it could cut the sightlines for some of the fans that are watching the game.
Yeah.
So we'll have to take a look at what best serves us over there. But that's, I think, as, as people are aware, if they're driving by the high school, there's dugouts being built at the high school.
And one of the things we talked about was getting the tarps and having the, you know, North Reading colors with the North Reading logo on it and.
But that would work very, I like, I looked at it, it worked very well, and I don't think it would be very expensive to, to do that either.
Right.
Transportation. Transportation is an issue. We have a number of athletic teams that do not have prin, that have practices and, or games, obviously, off-site. And I think.
Home games. Home games, off-site.
Home games off-site, but also practices off-site. And everything from swim, swimming, to hockey, to wrestling, to cross-country, to coming up, to obviously, the next couple, two, three years, tennis. So what we tried to do was to get together the superintendent and the principal and the athletic director and put together a policy for students traveling to and from practices and for home games that are, are off, off-campus. Obviously, away games, we have, and not only provide transportation to, to away games. And that the policies and the issues associated with transportation include, you know, traffic, parking, et cetera. In particular, at the little school, they are currently the late school, the elementary school cycle. So what happens is that it's a little bit difficult to park. The softball games generally start around three thirty P.M. over there. And at that time or just before that, the little school, you know, the children and students and staff are coming in and out. So we're gonna try to work on an arrangement. We even talked about next year, perhaps having little school being the early school so that we can clear out of there and get in there a little bit earlier.
We also talked, Jerry, about the, the visiting team buses, having them come in a different direction so they go the right way on the street and also until the school is let out and people. out and people have left, have the bus park either way up on Barbary or on Southwick.
Right.
And then when the school gets out, they can pull the bus down.
Right, that way they're not taking up parking spaces along Barbary there.
Right.
And again, a memo was written. It's going to be shared with the coaches, again, highlighting some of the issues with the transportation, with parking, way to park, et cetera. And a letter's going to go out to parts of students. I think this is going to be done probably for the first time next Monday, which is the first day of the spring season. So one other thing I'd add, too, is that we appropriated funds this spring for an assistant varsity coach for both softball and baseball. Again, that was done before these issues were even raised. But I think some of the issues that were raised were good ones. I've been associated with the softball program for many, many, many years over there, and some of these things, I guess, were right in front of my face without me really seeing them. But clearly, the restroom, access to the restroom facilities, the playing fields, those types of things are things that we should address, and we are addressing. So anybody has anything else to add?
I think we went a long way, one, looking at the maintenance schedule, et cetera, and seeing that they were equal. One, I think, that was discussed was irrigation, but Marty Tilton pointed out to us that there is no irrigation during the seasons. So maybe, we talked about, maybe in the summer, there's a possibility, there's no irrigation system at the little school, so maybe we can somehow find a way to irrigate occasionally over there, but there really isn't.
Irrigation's an interesting thing, because at that time of the year, you don't need it.
Right.
So you're talking about April, May, and into very early June, and generally, you don't need it, you don't really see the system working over at the high school either. But during the course of the year, through the summer and into the early fall, that's when you can do some damage to the turf, and the irrigation might come in handy. So we'll have to work and see if we can figure out something.
But I do think, working with Chris Molly and keeping the kids off the field during the season is going to be a huge help.
Make a big difference.
Because that's like, probably an hour or so or more a day where you don't have kids trampling all over the outfield, and I think that'll be helpful.
And I, you know, I want to thank Chris, because she had to make some concessions, you know, that I'm sure, you know, we're...
Right, they, you know, she's got a system over there, and she's working with us, which is great to make things a little better for the softball team.
So that's the update.
Any questions? Comments? We did not have a finance planning team meeting, because the superintendent canceled school on Friday. We are meeting next Friday, however, the 15th, so there's nothing to report there. Policy subcommittee is meeting tomorrow, or in that?
Now it's going to be April 8.
Okay. And then athletic subcommittee is April 2nd. Finance planning team, we just talked about, is next week. And then I'm pretty sure I can make that evaluation subcommittee date, so that's March...
I'll just confirm that with Mr. Bowers, and we'll work on that after the meeting.
Okay. Anything else?
The administrative report.
The administrative board, anything?
Yes, I'd like to just give you an update on the search for the Director of Finance and Operations. The window for applications closed last Friday, and this week, we begin the screening process. I'm pleased to report to you that we received 34 applications for this position. Many, many of the applicants are highly qualified, which means they meet the criteria that had been set forth in what we're looking for with the next Director of Finance and Operations. So there's a process that will be followed this week for screening, and through that screening process, we'll identify those candidates that will be invited to come in for an interview. Those interviews will take place the first week of April, April 2nd, 3rd, and 4th.
Okay.
Okay?
Any questions? All right. I guess that's it. No questions?
And this workshop and training, did you work this at all from the little six PAs office?
Yes.
Okay, because it features Erica Hansen getting into a lot.